...of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Stay standing here for a moment of silence, please. Then we have item number five.
Minutes of the October sixteenth, twenty seventeen meeting.
Who do approve the minutes as printed?
Second.
In the second, any discussion of it? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. We have a few items for the update Rock Island. We have "Meet the Unhuggables of the Forest." Looking for an environmentally friendly Halloween activity aimed at all ages on Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen from six-thirty PM to seven-thirty. A Black Hawk State Historic Site will celebrate Halloween with a short walk in the moonlight to meet some of the site's special critters such as chipmunks, foxes, spiders, snakes, bats, and more. Hear the animals played by Augustana Drama Students as they tell stories about living in the forest. Inside Singing Bird Center will be a show and tell by Site naturalist Chuck Wester and refreshments. The event is free, but for more information you can call three oh nine seven eight eight nine five three six. It's a wonderful event, I know I've taken my grandchildren several times. Trick or Treat Night, the official Trick or Treat Night for the city of Rock Island will be Tuesday, October thirty-first. The fund starts at five PM and goes till eight PM. Please be on the lookout for all the ghosts and goblins as they knock on doors. Job Fair, the Rock Island Economic Growth Corporation in partnership with Rock Island Minion School District will host a job fair on Tuesday, November first, two thousand seventeen from three-thirty to six PM. Connect with local businesses and apply for jobs. There will be food, drinks, and raffle prizes. The job fair will be held at Francis Willard School, twenty-five oh three Ninth Street in Rock Island. For questions, please call three oh nine seven nine four six seven one one. We have one other one I know that, Mr. Spaghetti.
Yes, I just wanted to make one more reminder about the third ward meeting to be held this coming Monday, a week from today, October thirtieth, at six PM at the Hallberg Center on Twenty-Fourth Street in Rock Island. Everyone's invited. Thank you.
Event. Okay. Item number seven.
Presentation of the twenty-seventeen Best Rain Garden and Community Garden Awards by the Beautification Commission.
So we do have some representatives here to help with this, but the city's Beautification Commission began the Best Rain Garden Awards Program twelve years ago to recognize the efforts made by citizens in creating and maintaining rain gardens throughout the city. Rain Gardens for Rock Island Program. Rain gardens are shallow depressions planted with parental plants that are located near the downspouts or on areas that shed noticeable amounts of rainwater. Rain gardens provide beneficial functions that include reducing storm water runoff, flooding, absorption, and pollutants, and sustainable native wildlife. We have the Beautification Commission is recognizing three of the gardens this year. And so, here are three, those three people, and there's the photos that should be up here. We have Dan and Deanne, and I'll get this, hopefully I get this right. Gano? Gano? If you want to come up and... Come on through here. There you go. Look at that garden. Become an expert here. We have Claire Cavanix? Cavanix? Please. I mispronounce this, huh? Not here? There's theirs. And Terrence Rodriguez. Terrence here? We got the community gardens next. The city's Beautification Commission began the Community Gardens Award Program seven years ago to recognize various community gardens throughout the Rock Island. Community gardens are run by neighborhood groups, churches, schools, and community service organizations. They provide a place for citizens to grow vegetables and learn more about gardening while strengthening the community. The Beautification Commission is recognizing eleven community gardens and ten individuals and organizations responsible for their maintenance this year, and overall winner is not chosen. So the names and some of the photos will be shown here, and these, I apologize ahead of time, but some of the names are very difficult, at least for me, so I apologize, and please correct me if you're... I'm sure you will be. Alan Nirestor? Ritor? Allen. Is there an Allen here? Not here. Thank you. Okay. Father Samuel Lynn. Very good, very nice. Steer Dieromona? I probably really goofed that up. Steer, Starr? At twelve, at eleven-twenty-two and eleven-twenty-eight Ninth Avenue? Anybody here? Then we have Stefan. It's not Stefan. Surafine? No? At ten-fifteen Ninth Street and nine oh one-eleventh Street? Nobody here for that? Okay. Reverend Jaclyn Walls, Franklin Fields. People are busy tonight. We got Brian McMaster, Mary Mock, Craig Williams, Thurgood Marshall? Marshall Gardens? Mary Camoke, thank you. No, I apologize. I have a tough time spelling, let alone pronouncing. So I apologize. Elizabeth? Elizabeth? Is there Elizabeth here? Six oh three and six-twelve Fifth Street? Not here. Oh. Is this...
I'll see the next one out.
Okay, next one maybe? Alsafine?
Absfincin.
And how do you pronounce the last name?
Niitaka.
Niitaka. Well done. people out. All right, item number eight.
Proclamation declaring November first, twenty seventeen, as In From the Cold Day.
We have somebody here, I believe, that... All right. Appreciate that. So here's what the proclamation reads. Whereas, in the early nineteen nineties, a group of citizens concerned with the growing number of homeless persons and the lack of services in place to meet with their needs met to share ideas inform a group called In From the Cold. And whereas, the group decided its sole purpose of existence would be to raise funds for homeless service providers so that no person will have to live on the streets, in the abandoned cars, or in buildings, or in an unsafe location. And whereas, In From the Cold has worked to strengthen community awareness of the homeless and to provide financial support to members of the Quad City Shelter and Transitional Housing Council in their efforts to provide service for those in need. And whereas, in nineteen ninety-three, In From the Cold began the Mayor's Hunger Luncheon as a major fundraiser event for the group. This event is held on the weekday, on a weekday in November, offering a simple meal of bread and soup. On that day, the group asked all attending to eat simple so that others can eat simply eat. And whereas, all the area mayors have graciously participated by hosting this event and by serving the meals. And whereas, in nineteen ninety-four, Phil Collins solicited donations at his concert, In From the Cold. In addition to the five thousand raised at the concert, Phil Collins contributed five thousand. And whereas, the city of Rock Island joins Breaking Traffic, a program of family resources in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, and comprehensive services to survivors of the human trafficking. Since nineteen ninety-two, In From the Cold has raised more than three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the homeless in the Quad Cities, and whereas, the group is celebrating twenty-five years of helping others find a warm and safe place to lie their heads each night. Now, therefore, I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, hereby proclaim our support In From the Cold and designate November first, two thousand seventeen, as In From the Cold Day.
A special ordinance amending a zoning district and zoning map at eleven oh three Twenty-Fifth Street.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Rule call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Eman's absent. Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number ten.
A special ordinance vacating a segment of Forty-second Avenue, also known as Shore Acres, public right-of-way at sixty-seven Shore Acres.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Rule call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Eman's absent. Clark.
Aye.
Berry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item eleven.
Claims A through F. A, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of thirty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars to Miles Chevrolet of Decatur, Illinois for general liability claim. B, report from the Information Technology Department regarding payment in the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars to Esteca Systems Incorporated of Sandy, Utah for the City Works System Software Annual Update and Support Maintenance for the year from December eighteen, two thousand seventeen through December seventeenth, two thousand eighteen. C, report from the Information Technology Department regarding payment in the amount of eighteen thousand one hundred dollars to Esri of Redlands, California for the ArcGIS annual software maintenance for the period from January fifteenth, two thousand eighteen through January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. D, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fourteen cents to Electric Pump of Des Moines, Iowa for additional costs related to the emergency repair of the Thirtieth Street Lift Station. E, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number two in the amount of three hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars to General Constructors Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa for the Outfall Seven Relocation Project for services provided from September first, two thousand seventeen through September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. And F, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one in the amount of two hundred and ninety-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-four cents to Valley Construction Company of Rock Island, Illinois for the Old Mills Street Reconstruction South of Thirteenth Avenue Project for services provided from August fourteenth, two thousand seventeen through October ninth, two thousand seventeen.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payments for claims items A through F as recommended.
Second. Move to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Rule call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Eman's absent. Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twelve.
Claims for the week of October thirteenth through October nineteenth in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents.
Move to allow the claims?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Eman's absent. Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item thirteen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the twenty-seventeen Sewer Cleaning and Televising Program, recommending the bid be awarded to Michael's Pipe Services of Brownsville, Wisconsin in the amount of thirty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twelve cents.
Move to award the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents for items number thirteen and fourteen.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion?
Larry, I do have a question for you, real quick here. I plan on supporting staff recommendation on this. I was interested to know, though, in looking at Michael's Corporation out of Wisconsin, they do have a pretty significant OSHA history. That was something that was of concern to me. I just wanted to raise that if we could have a proactive conversation about that with them, you know, something we should be concerned about or at least aware of. And my question in regards to this is, do you know when we're going through that RBO checklist process, are we looking through the establishment search through OSHA? Is that part of the process currently? Because if not, I think it should be incorporated, just as a general reference.
Sure.
It'll help to identify, I think in this case we'll notice that there's some repeat issues, and just if staff is privy to that information and can have those proactive conversations, I think it helps us with the project and safety issues down the line.
Sure. I mean, to answer your question, I can't say if this one was definitely reviewed for the OSHA violations, but I can make sure I talk to our engineering staff and make sure it is included in the future.
Sure. Not as something that would, like I said, I plan on supporting this, but just things for us to be aware of, for our staff who are going to be out there watching the jobs as they go on, so, thank you.
Brenna, thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to piggyback on that as well, you know, I work in this industry, heavy-duty trucks and the like, and I'm just concerned if we have companies that don't have necessarily the greatest track record with safety. These are trucks that are working on our roads, that are in our community, and I've seen trucks that shouldn't be on the road in my line of work, and not to say that Michael's has those trucks, but, you know, I mean, this is something, we have an RBO for a reason. We want to make sure that we are getting responsible bidders, so, thank you for looking into it, Larry.
Yes. Larry, could you come back up? Didn't know you were going to move on me that fast. Okay, the televising program, is that the program that we've been using out in southwest Rock Island, trying to find problems in the water system? Maybe Randy, you might know more about this. Is that what the televising program is?
No, this is for the sanitary and storm systems specifically. What we were able to identify in the southwest area was a failed PRV system, which is what was causing some of the pressure fluctuations I believe you're referring to. So that was just, that was all handled in-house. Fortunately, we found the problem before we had to outsource, so we, you know, this is completely separate.
Okay. I know I hadn't heard from the constituents out there concerned, and so I figured it was...
That's good news.
But I think there was a televised, and there were cameras sent in there also, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Okay.
If I understood the motion, it was to combine items thirteen and fourteen, is that right?
Correct, yeah, same company.
I understand that. Then I think that it would be proper for the clerk to read number fourteen before we vote.
Yes.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the twenty-seventeen Sewer Lining Program, recommending the bid be awarded to Michael's Pipe Services of Brownsville, Wisconsin in the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand five hundred and seven dollars and thirty-eight cents.
All right, so we've had a motion, we've had discussion, and a second and discussion, so, rule call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Eman's absent. Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item fifteen.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a bid and modification to the current demolition contract with Valley Construction Company of Rock Island, Illinois, recommending adding one residential property at thirteen twenty-six Fourteenth Street in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Move to work the bid and approve the modifications recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Eman's absent. Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item sixteen.
Report from General Administration regarding a special ordinance amending Chapter Two, Article Six, Division Two, Section two dash two one six of the Code of Ordinances as it relates to appointments and removals to boards and commissions.
Motion to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Huh?
I had some concerns about the section dealing with felony convictions and other criminal activity, and I wondered if the city attorney could speak to that in terms of where we're at as far as the state legislature is concerned and then our own municipality.
With regard to the, I can't answer the question with regard to the state legislature off the top of my head. I would certainly be happy to get you an answer in that regard, but the, it's my belief that unless you have received your rights back, just like your voting rights, that you could not, could not serve or have received some sort of pardon, but I don't know that for certain off the top of my head. Did you talk to Hector this afternoon?
I did speak to Hector on the phone, yes.
Because he, I was out this afternoon, and did he address that issue with you?
To my satisfaction, I think he did. I just, I didn't know if the rest of the council had any questions about it or not. Apparently, I don't know if there is a direct link to having voting rights restored or not in these various cases because there are different types of felonies and it's complicated. So I just, I was just looking for some more clarification and possibly to answer some questions for the rest of the council as well.
Sure, and I think that we, he had done the research, Hector had done the research when I got back to the office, he had indicated that he had called, but he did not tell me the nature of the specific question or the answer in that regard.
Well, I was just concerned in terms of if you have somebody who's committed a crime, maybe as a teenager, and they've served their sentence or they made whatever restitution they had to make, rehabilitated, whatever, whether or not having had a felony record or some other record should prevent them from serving on a board or a commission. And I realize that the wording says that the mayor may, not must.
It would seem, and I'd say that would be my point, would be that it is something that they could consider, but I would think that certainly that might be a situation if you have a seventeen-year-old who was charged with a crime as an adult, they're now forty years old and say they wish to serve on a board or a commission, that I would think that'd be something that would be within the mayor's discretion to consider those factors as opposed to some other felonies that might have occurred.
And I think as far as the state legislature or the Supreme, the Illinois Supreme Court, Hector indicated that they were still discussing this, a matter like this, that it wasn't really settled, it probably wouldn't be settled for a couple more years.
And that may well be the case, because once again, I know he did do the research, like I say, when I came in this afternoon about four-thirty back from being out of the office, he indicated you had had a conversation on that issue.
I was satisfied with the answer that I got, and I'm satisfied with the way it's written, and I think that if there were a problem, we could revisit it in the future if necessary.
True.
I was just curious, why did it need to, why was that extra piece added? Because the mayor, he has the right to appoint, and we approved, so what?
It was my understanding that there had been a request to revisit this issue, the way that the, procedurally, the way that it works currently, and if this is not, this change is not made, is that it would be brought back to council, council would vote on whether someone would remain or not remain on a board. The, in the current situation, the mayor makes the nomination, and then, as you know, as we've done over the last several weeks, it comes up on the agenda, and then council votes on that appointment. And so, that was my understanding, was they asked us to look at a different process or additional process.
Currently, currently, if, to remove someone for cause, it does require a public hearing, and these could be embarrassing topics. So we felt it was better to handle it this way rather than bring it out in public if someone had a, you know, a debt or a felony conviction.
Okay, you saying you can remove, these are the reasons we can remove them?
Yes.
All right. To clarify, though, this Part B does say a person is not eligible to serve on a board or commission if that person is in arrears, blah blah blah, or has been convicted in any court, so it doesn't sound like it's, you know, for the, I mean, it says, not that it's that the mayor may or may not, it simply says, if you have a felony, you may not serve on a commission, you may not be appointed, you may not be approved.
Once again, it says may not versus will not.
But I think that's not the case with this section reading.
Yeah, it's not how section B reads.
Yes, it says not eligible is the, is the word, I suppose someone, if someone wanted to indicate may not be eligible as an amendment, if that is something that the council was more...
I think the mayor should have that choice.
I just think the mayor should...
Because, you know, even if you've been a convicted for a week, or if you've been, and you've paid your debt to society, you ought to be able to step back up and convince the mayor and council you should be on it, you should be on it. And similarly, with the liquor control rules and regulations, if you've a convicted felon, you can't be behind the bar. I think that's ridiculous after you've paid your penalty, after you've paid back for your crime. But that's another story.
So the amendment would be to change is not to may not?
If there is one, if somebody wishes...
May not, I think would be the proper, because is not or shall not would be more mandatory, and it may not would be...
And then, one more question also for clarification. If being in arrears in the payment of a tax or other indebtedness, I guess what is defined as being in arrears in the payment of a tax? So for example, if you're supposed to be making a one hundred dollar a month payment, but you make five dollars a month, is that still, you're still making a payment, is that still in arrears because it's not the established how much it should be, or what would the legal...
I would think that if you are not paying the full, if you have an agreed amount that is to be paid, if you're not paying that full amount, that that would be in arrears. That would be my interpretation of it.
Okay. Who made the motion?
Can we amend that we just strike B and leave that? Because I'm thinking another city council would come up here and discussing whether it may or may not, and it just would... Can we amend that we just strike B and leave that? Because I'm thinking another city council would come up here and discussing whether it may or may not, and it just would look as if the mayor, the mayor's hands at that time would be tied.
My concern here is that we are changing ordinance language here. I, beyond this being on the agenda, didn't really know that this issue was coming up, and the question here is basically ceding power from the council and the public to make a determination that an appointment that's made by the mayor, brought to this council, the council approves that appointment. Now, in terms of the subjective nature to some of this, I could see the potential that this could be, well, this person's debt is different than someone else's debt, and they could be treated differently, based on the preference of the mayor at that time. So, you know, I'm concerned that this is, this is a bigger change than may appear at the surface here, and I would certainly like to have some more time to consider this, and we have another alderman, too, I think giving that alderman a chance to think about this as well, as this is a change to our city law.
It's worth it. I've talked to Dave about it, and he's.
He's supportive.
He's supportive of it, but.
Well, you know, I.
That's fine, I can, I had to speak for him in third hand, but he did support it.
But I think there's some changes we'd like to see to this, if I'm not mistaken.
Do you want to table it till next council's meeting?
Or just reconsider at the first meeting in November, get some proposal, different language put together.
So I would think we should, the appropriate motion would be then to motion to postpone to a date certain and pick the date that you wanted to postpone it, because otherwise tabling can come up with issues if somehow it's not brought back up.
You just need a poster that says that it gets brought up a lot. That's my opinion. If the council's ready to move on this.
I'm fine with that opinion.
I think the definition of arrears is pretty definite. I mean, either you are or you aren't late on your bills. I mean, and then, in our finance department's always been accommodating to people to set up smaller payments to get, let people get caught up, but I think it's a definitive word, arrears.
Mostly the issue, sorry, just, the issue for me is that the process of removing for these issues goes, you know, the individual would be notified to say, well, we're going to, we're going to proceed to have you removed through public, public hearing. At that point, they could choose to resign, but there's no recourse for that individual to petition that, basically. If the mayor decides, based on this language, you got to go, you got to go, and you don't have any way to appeal that process. Now, if we want to make that change, then we make that change. I'm just saying, I think.
I don't think a little more time would hurt.
I believe we're talking about two separate issues, and the one issue, as far as a convicted felon or whatever, a convicted felon can be sitting in the mayor's seat, or sitting up here. So why do you say a convicted felon cannot serve on a board or whatever? And then the other issue, as far as bills, and the only bill that the city puts out is the water bill, water and sewer. Are there other bills that they put out?
Parking tickets, there's speeding tickets, there's drunk and DUIs, there's.
Yeah, but the parking issue, me and James Spaghetti, we discussed this, there's stuff going on there, too, but I would be willing to wait also on this.
Make the motion.
Is it, is it the case that you can serve as mayor as a convicted felon?
Yeah.
Yes, I have not researched that, I am not aware of that.
The municipal code, we copied the municipal code for this, and as it applies to elected officials, you cannot serve if you're in arrears, or you cannot take the oath of office if you're in arrears or convicted of a felony.
This language is just, is for elected officials, came from that code.
Yes, but in the state of Illinois, a convicted felon, which we've had right here in the city of Rock Island, have been elected to public office, so I don't know where, which code would override which code, but once you've served your time and hit the street, you can, you get all your rights back, and you can run for office, and you can be elected.
I think there's enough confusion over this, and questions that I'd like to move to postpone the issue until our next.
Second.
Our next meeting.
Withdraw the motion.
First motion we had.
I didn't make the motion.
I know, Steve, I think did.
Alderman Talon Air made the motion, the original motion.
Second would have to be removed first.
You seconded it.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Oh, then I'll remove my second.
I'll remove my motion.
Now, make your motion to, for a date certain.
Okay, so now I'm making my motion again, to postpone the issue until the first meeting in November.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Any more discussion on that? Okay, roll call, please. I think we need a roll call on that, or just need a.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Enos absent. Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item seventeen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding a rate proposal for the twenty-eighteen Sunset Marina Boating Seizing, recommending a Marina Slip and Storage Rate Increase of five percent, implementation of the pre-lease agreement, implementation of the Buy-One-Get-One-Half-Price Referral Program, implementation of the Summer Fund Rental Package, and a leaseholder drawing for one free annual contract for one season.
Motion to approve the Sunset Marina rate proposals as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Enos absent. Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item eighteen.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Alderman Parker for the installation of stop signs along Fifteenth Avenue at Twenty-Eighth Street. Note, this item was deferred from the October second, twenty-seventeen council meeting.
Move to approve the request as recommended? I'm confused by the language again.
The Traffic Engineering Committee recommended to deny the.
Yeah, so I've moved to not deny the request as recommended, my mistake.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
We just.
We are, the motion is to install stop signs.
Right, correct. You want, is this the, am I in the right place here, where we're talking about the hills?
Yes, this is the one.
I thought we discussed that one, that that one might be a little dangerous. Is that the same one I'm referring to?
Yeah, it's the same one. I mean, there's, there's stop signs at the bottom of Thirty-Eighth, or stoplights at the bottom of Thirty-Eighth Street by Augustana, you know, I mean, I walked that neighborhood this weekend, and I talked to the residents that live right there, and similar to the responses to the letters, the majority of them want the traffic along Fifteenth Avenue to slow down, and this is a way of doing that. There was also voice approval or a request to limit the parking as well. It's, it's a very congested intersection with parking on both sides, and so, I mean, the majority of the people that live there want it, I think that we should give them a stop sign.
So do you have parking restrictions included in this motion?
That's something separate, and we need to circulate a more formal petition on that one as well, but, you know, as we had discussed, the, the parking issue, after we had discussed that, I brought it up to residents this weekend while walking around up there, and they agreed that that would be a good idea as well, to have both the limit on the parking and the stop sign. The parking helps free up the intersections so that you can see better, because right now, when you go through there, it's very limited visibility, and then the stop sign slows the traffic.
Randy, what was the staff recommendation as far as this?
The recommendation was to deny, deny the stop sign.
Deny the stop sign.
That's typically the recommendation in all residential areas, because they don't meet the traffic warrants for a stop sign.
Could I ask Larry a question, please? Last week when we discussed this, I felt that parking was the issue, the, the main issue in the problem, because having parking on both sides of the street created a situation where you had one lane in the center of the street that was drivable, and then you have cars coming in both directions, and I was not in favor of stop signs. I could reconsider my opinion about the stop signs, but I would like that, to see that linked to some parking restrictions that would, as Alderman Parker said, open up the intersection there so people could see, and, and you would have more than one lane, so my question for you is, would it be better to do that as one package, so that we get the type of regulation that we want, or do you think it's okay to approve the stop signs this week and then work out a parking control regulation in a subsequent meeting?
It's a good question. I mean, in my personal opinion, we can put the stop signs in place, but we've not reduced the traffic congestion if we don't alleviate the parking problem at the same time. I drove through there on the way here this evening just to get a personal feel for it. West of the stop sign, or west of the intersection of Twenty-Eighth Street, there was parking on both the north and south side. There was one lane of traffic, so if you had a stop sign, you got somebody who entered across the way before you did, they have nowhere to go. Coming from the east side, with parking on the north side only, I'm in a very small four-door Mazda sedan, getting as close to the, or the vehicles that are already parked on the north side, there is very limited space to even travel on the south side as a second vehicle passing by, so it is very congested, as you know, Alderman Parker stated, it's a very congested intersection. Without taking care of the parking, in my opinion, first, the stop signs only exacerbate the problem, make it worse. Thank you.
All right, let's.
But doesn't the parking on both sides slow traffic?
Well, you would think. Okay, I just thought, I mean, go through there, I mean, it's barrel run if you're going fast. Well, okay, fine, let's hold off on the stop signs.
Well, we can authorize it, and they can put it in after we do the other. I mean, we can tell them to do it, just, they can, but they can install it, just, and we'll do the.
No, it's fine, you know, we will postpone the vote on the stop signs to the last week in November. Give us more time. Yes, Randy?
So we have to have enough time to contact the residents and get their feedback, so it would probably be December sometime.
Okay.
And, and realize that the residents may not support the, typically, the problem with parking on, limiting parking to one side is everybody wants it on their side.
Well, I know the residents, the residents for whom parking I'm, you know, planning on eliminating are the ones that told me, we want no parking right there, so, I mean, the very people who, houseboarders that said, I don't want people parking there.
Well, and if I can make one more comment.
Sure.
When and if we do put the stop signs up along with the parking restrictions, it's my opinion, from traveling that T-intersection on Fifteenth Avenue, that you should have no parking on either side of the street for a determined amount of space on Fifteenth Avenue, so that there's enough, and, because you're going to have stop signs there eventually, I suppose, but you want enough visibility from all three directions to be able to see who's pulling out, and who's stopping, and whose turn it is, so I would clear that intersection of parking for whatever determination amount of feet you think is safe.
That would probably be the best solution, honestly, yes.
Sure. Let's do that.
Motion withdrawn. Who seconded it?
I did. I removed my second.
All right.
Again.
Withdrawn, let's postpone this until the final meeting in December, then? Would that be sufficient time?
Second.
Should be plenty of time, yes.
All right.
I'm going to have a stop sign for Christmas.
Wrap it up with a bow.
Maybe.
Yeah, maybe.
We've got a new motion and a second. We need a roll call on that.
I don't need it, because we just redrew it, postponed it.
Well, it's not a roll call.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Just everybody votes?
Because it's not a new one. You want to, do you need everybody to vote?
The motion's been removed, right?
Yep.
But I did make a motion.
You made a motion, see, that's why.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, just a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
There we go.
You need to do something.
All right, item number nineteen.
Report from the city clerk regarding a request from Second Baptist Church for a street closing at Sixth Avenue between Ninth Street and Tenth Street, and a portion of Tenth Street between Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue for their sixth annual trunk-or-treat event to be held on Tuesday, October thirty-first, twenty-seventeen, from five PM to eight PM.
Move to approve the request as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm curious. Item twenty, other business. Other business? Item twenty-one.
Executive Session, five, ILCS, one-twenty, Section Two, C-eleven, litigation, when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
Move to go into executive session for the exceptions cited.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Enos absent. Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Okay.